Well, Mr. Manager, first let me thank you and Team Norfolk for the efforts this week. We had about 77,000 residents without power between Saturday night and Sunday morning. I believe we're down to, well, maybe 3,000.
That's right.
And the cleanup effort is going very good, but there are still some homes without power. But hats off to you and Team Norfolk for the way that you've handled your response, and more importantly, your preparation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, well done.
Yeah, well done, departments, and what outstanding efforts during the hurricane. Well, Mr. Manager, we're going to turn it over to you for the first agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As we follow back up on the retreat, there were three major issues that the council discussed that dealt with education, safety, and housing. But also, we had a conversation, the council had a conversation about the legislative package and the legislative agenda. So, we thought that we would start off tonight with having Michael Edwards from Kemper Consulting and Michelle Washington, our Public and Government Relations Manager, to give the council some key dates as it relates to the next year's, this upcoming legislative package, as well as to make sure that we understand some of the issues that council would like for us to support during the upcoming General Assembly session. So, I think this is Michelle's first time out with a presentation before the council, so she'll tee it up, and Mike will tag team with her.
It's not my birthday today.
Not your birthday today.
So, thank you, and good evening. Just wanted to go over a few dates with you. Norfolk's legislative calendar, you've received an invitation to the city council's annual legislative dinner that's scheduled for November the first from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Slover Library. November 30th is a new offering from the Virginia Municipal League. It's a regional supper in Hampton at the Embassy Suites. And you might also want to take a look at January the 25th on your calendars. That's VML Day at the Capitol. That's a chance for council members to go to Richmond and meet with members of our local delegation. Excuse me? January the 25th. Yes, ma'am. And I'm going to introduce to you Mike Edwards now. He's from Kemper Consulting. He's here tonight with Joel Andrus. Mike is going to give you a brief overview of some key dates from the legislative session.
Thank you, Michelle. It's a pleasure to be with you. And first, let me begin by saying Kemper Consulting is grateful for and values its longtime relationship with the city. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. Couple of quick dates about the '27 General Assembly session before I talk about the backdrop of the session. December 16th, the governor will release his proposed budget amendments and also the new revenue estimates. And you'll see in the next slide, the revenue estimates will be important and set the stage for any possible change, hopefully better news than we heard in August, which we'll get to in a second. This is an election year in 2017. The 100 members of the General Assembly of the House of Delegates stand for election, three statewide offices, governor, lieutenant governor, attorney general, and possibly a U.S. Senate seat. And of course, election year does play atmospherics in terms of legislation that's introduced and speeches and reaction to legislation in the General Assembly. The budget is probably the main storyline this year. The budget has taken a shortfall. The revenues have taken a shortfall since the adjournment of the General Assembly in April of last year. The total shortfall for FY '16, '17, and '18 is now pushing $1.5 billion. And that requires severe action quickly. The good news is in FY '17, two actions, good news, bad news, can help solve most of the '17 problem. One is putting on the back burner the pay increases for teachers, state locals, and state employees. I think it's fair to say the governor, the General Assembly, if there's a will, there's a way. They'd like to come back and try to find a way to fund those salaries. But today, I don't think that's likely, again today in October. The second action that gets almost two-thirds of the closing of FY '17 shortfall is use of rainy day funds. So, the governor has taken the additional step of asking each state agency to bring forward 5% reductions they reduced several weeks ago. He can implement those administratively without coming back to the General Assembly. In this first round, it's important that we say first round, K through 12 programs have been held harmless, not the Department of Education, but K through 12 programs, and the colleges, universities. Kemper Consulting's understanding is that the colleges, universities will take targeted reductions in '17, not necessarily baseline 5%. Before the end of this month, the governor is going to ask for a second round of reductions for FY '18 from agencies. We expect or guess that that's going to be another round of 5% reductions, maybe upwards of 7%. Don't think K through 12 will be held harmless in '18, and colleges and universities should not be held harmless in '18 based upon preliminary information. FY '18 generally is less clear. When you look at the revenue reductions, in '17, the General Assembly, the governor agreed to take the forecast from 3.5%, approximately below 2% in revenue growth. In '18, they brought the revenue prediction down, but it's still above 3%. And some people would say that's optimistic. So, '17 will be difficult. '18, right now, will be very difficult. We'll be pleased to give you updates as we go along. Turn it back over to Ms. Washington, if I may.
Tom, excuse me. So, all of these school boards and city councils passed budgets based off of that projection. So, there's going to be a lot of upset school boards as they pass teacher pay raises because of this expectation. I think everybody knew, but because the forecast was so great, I think people were a little bit more optimistic on it. So, I mean, they're really going to hear this. They're going to hear they've got to find that money because every school board across the state is going to be short money in next year's budget because the money's not there to cover that teacher raise, teacher salary. And the localities, we're going to get asked to make up the difference. So, it's really us that's going to end up doing it.
Thank you.
So, next, we wanted to talk about statewide and regional issues. We touched on these at the retreat last month, some big ones that our partners are following. Virginia Municipal League is monitoring the state budget, of course, along with local authority to regulate short-term rentals. That's the Airbnb issue. That shows up in the planning district commission as well. Virginia First Cities is working to preserve K through 12 funding gains, and the HRTPO is increased transportation funding. What that looks like right now, we don't know. There's talk of a floor on the regional gas tax, but we don't know if that's what we'll go forward to the General Assembly or not. So, Norfolk's game plan, because of the short session, we're focusing on a short list aligned with our priorities. Resiliency, continue the work of the Joint Committee on the Coastal State Resiliency and Recurrent Flooding. That's led by Delegate Chris Staley from Virginia Beach and Senator Mamie Locke from Hampton, and we're hoping to move forward with their recommendations in 2017. We talked a little about transportation, education, funding, safety. There's another issue with 599 funding. Our police department gets about $675,000 from that funding. And then, healthy neighborhoods, again, that's short-term rentals. So, next, we wanted to give you an overview, some background on the issue of marijuana decriminalization. Want to be sure we understand the terms that we're talking about. Decriminalization is generally making simple possession of small amounts of marijuana an infraction or civil offense punishable by a fine and not jail time. Legalization means that marijuana is legal to use and to possess. There are different categories of that, medicinal marijuana and recreational marijuana, which means small amounts for adult use is not against the law. Nationally, 21 states and a number of cities have lessened penalties for marijuana possession. Some states still consider it a misdemeanor, but it carries no threat of jail time. It comes with something more like a fine. Some states have gone a step further and legalized marijuana. More than a third of the country lives in areas where marijuana has been decriminalized. And this fall, there are ballot referenda in nine states dealing with legalization or recreational use or decriminalization and medicinal use. Attitudes about marijuana have changed over time. About half of adults now admit to marijuana use at some time during their lives. In Hampton Roads, according to a CNU study, Christopher Newport University study from 2016, about 77% of millennials support decriminalization. The CDC did a study on legal penalties for marijuana use. More than a third believe a fine should be imposed. In Virginia, misdemeanor possession of marijuana, a first offense for less than half an ounce, is punishable by a maximum of 30 days in jail and/or a $500 fine. Those are typically dismissed after six to 12 months if you meet the court's conditions. That's often community service. Penalties go upward from there. For a subsequent offense, the maximum is 12 months in jail or $2,500 fine. And for a felony, distribution of marijuana, that's amounts of more than half an ounce but less than five pounds. It's not less than a year in jail nor more than 10 years in prison. And there's a fine attached to that as well.
Is that first category considered the first offender-type program?
Yes, first offense. And if you're a juvenile and you're adjudicated in juvenile court, judges there have discretion to make first offender findings more than one time.
Andrea?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. So, the penalty creates maximum 30 days in jail and/or $500 fine. Is there a minimum? I don't know if I can find out. Or maybe there's someone in the group who can answer that.
I'd only be guessing. I would think not that it's very atypical that a sentence will carry a minimum.
Martin?
Minimum could be dismissal.
Excuse me?
Minimum could be dismissal. They could simply dismiss it. I mean, the judge has the latitude to find anything to dismiss the case to.
So, it falls on the judge, Martin?
It does say under the felony, not less than one year. So, I mean, there's a minimum of that in that regard, but not for the...
So...
Do we have data locally?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Mamie, go ahead.
So, Michelle, where do we lie as far as in connection with the drug court? Because I know that the city of Norfolk does have a really good drug court. I mean, they do phenomenal things with citizens here. How, what is our relationship with the drug court partnership in reference to marijuana possession?
I would need to research that further, but if my memory serves me, misdemeanor possession offenses go to the general district court. I believe the drug court is in the circuit court, and it's for repeat offenders with drug offenses or drug-associated offenses, that the underlying cause is addiction. I would want to verify that with the courts, but that's what I recall.
Tommy?
So, you're absolutely right. Misdemeanor offenses are managed by general district court. Our drug court is a circuit court program, and so we found offenses.
What I was going to ask is, can we just contact the clerk, George Schaper, and ask him for data on how many cases have come through our courts at the different levels of this, so that we can get our own? I haven't seen it. Nobody's provided actual data, and whether or not that number has gone up or down, and then what the final decision is by the judge on each one of those or each year. So, what percentage of them end up with a minimum or dismissed? Is it somebody that's with a really good lawyer like Martin that gets dismissed all the time, and then others are not?
I came for that.
I helped Andy out for a while. I'm just saying, like, it would be interesting to see our own city's data on that in courts and how that's handled.
So, maybe we can get some clarification on your questions, actually, so we can help in working with that drug court to get that data.
And we have requested data from the State Office of the Supreme Court. We do have some numbers. We're still working to analyze them to show what we have and how it applies to Norfolk as well as our sister cities in the region. We can provide that for you fairly quickly, I would think. So, possession arrest rates have varied over time. In Virginia, the marijuana arrest rate increased 39% in the 10 years between 2003 and 2013. In Norfolk, marijuana possession arrest rates are down 48% between 2012 and 2016. So, we looked at some of the impact of current marijuana policies. There are racial disparities in those policies. Blacks and whites use at roughly equal rates, but nationally, blacks are nearly four times more likely to be arrested for possession. Blacks are 10 times more likely than whites to go to prison for drug offenses. That does not specify for marijuana offenses, but for drug offenses. There are costs associated with marijuana policies. Last year, Norfolk police made 537 arrests for first offense, so there's a cost for law enforcement time. Sheriff McCabe said at a recent public gathering that there are 86 people in jail for marijuana possession, times $58 per day per inmate. That's $1.8 million per year. And a study in Massachusetts of the Drug Policy Forum showed that there was a possible savings of $24.3 million annually to law enforcement in courts following a study for decriminalization in Massachusetts. There are also impacts that are not measured in dollars. A criminal record can affect your job prospects. Loss of a driver's license after conviction can affect your employment if you already have a job. Drug convictions are a bar to federal financial aid under federal law. They can result in the loss of public assistance and public housing. And of course, time in jail or prison means time away from your family, your children, and your community. So, there's lots of research out there. Some of it conflicts, and there are differing opinions on the impact of decriminalization on marijuana use, on harmful consequences and arrests. There's research that shows that marijuana use can impair judgment, coordination, reaction time. There's some research that says marijuana is a gateway drug. There's some research that says that it isn't. There is also an argument to be made that tobacco and alcohol can be considered gateway drugs.
And tobacco and alcohol impair judgment, coordination, and reaction time.
So, there's also the possibility of positive impacts to decriminalization for disadvantaged communities, particularly for the reasons we just mentioned. Loss of financial aid affects people in disadvantaged communities more than it would in other So, a few of the options. Many states that have looked at this topic have taken all kinds of approaches to it. You can shift possession from small amounts of marijuana from a criminal charge to a civil violation. You can leave it as a criminal charge but eliminate jail time. You can remove the criminal penalties and add social service options for repeat drug offenders. Some states have looked at expunging past convictions following decriminalization. So, if you were convicted of possessing marijuana, a misdemeanor, in 2010, before the law changed, that charge would be scrubbed from your record. In New York State, they treat it like an open container. So, if you have it in open view, that's still a crime. So, some of the history, decriminalization bills have been introduced in Virginia before, dating back to 2010, and as recently as the last session. Delegate Steve Heretic from Portsmouth and Mark Levine from Alexandria introduced bills along with Senator Adam Eben of Alexandria. They died in committee. So, success would require a broad coalition of people to support. We would need to have support from other cities and localities, as well as some of our partner groups that have statewide support. And with that, I turn it over to you.
First of all, thank you, Michelle, as manager, for, you know, that presentation. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the information that you gave me from the General Assembly in regards to different committees. And I think that I spoke with Michelle today, and there are a couple of options that we will, you know, probably bring back to the entire council for us to consider at a later date. And as I said when I initially brought this up, I think it's something that the council needs to support. It's nothing that I'm trying to push. I think we need support from the entire council.
And there was discussion, Mr. Riddick, at VML yesterday. Councilman Smigle moderated, and how many was it? Six of us there?
Six of you. We voted you and Terry off-council if we were there.
Do I have to stay?
No, it's good to show support.
But it was great discussion on how we compare to other states, as well as Mr. Mayor, making suggestions how we could possibly, as far as committee and progression of what we wanted to do.
There was an interesting discussion. At the very end, the last question was actually more of a statement from a councilman from Wise County, who is a war veteran, and he had post-traumatic stress. And he was discussing personally how he could use it and all of his fellow veterans and the need for that. So, it was very robust, good discussion, although there was, you know, a council person from, I forgot where he's from, but even after listening to everything in the presentation, just had made up his mind that this was a bad thing. But I think that the session really opened up the eyes of a lot of council people from around the state, and it wouldn't surprise me if there's other localities that now will be discussing this at least. So, it was good. I know Charlottesville is interested in, and Roanoke, the two other major localities in Virginia have taken an interest on this topic as well.
After spending some time this afternoon with Mike Edwards from Kemper and Michelle, it's an uphill battle. You know, I had no idea that it was, and that, when I say I had no idea, there's so much community support, but I had no idea that the General Assembly, you know, the way it's constructed now, it should just be a tough fight. But I think it's a fight that if we all think should happen, we should, you know, embark upon it.
All right, Martin, and then Dr. Whibley.
Thank you, Michelle, for educating us on decrim and legalization. I do have a question. Bernard, what can we, as the city of Norfolk, do with regards to decrim, legalization, and any of these issues that we're kind of discussing here today?
We don't have the same authority as the General Assembly, so the state laws they pass are going to apply to us, and there's nothing we can do about it. But I thought that the statistic, that contrary to the increase in the Commonwealth in arrests for possession over the recent history, that Norfolk's arrests have declined. And so, that I may be misreading that statistic, but I would conclude from that that our police have exercised a discretion different than what has been occurring across the Commonwealth. And so, that we have that sort of discretionary function, so beginning with the police, beginning with, following by the Commonwealth attorney, and then our judges. And so, I think that is the extent of our legal authority is in that area, and exercising that discretion, that we can't change state law.
Appreciate that. I just want to make sure everyone at home understood that we can't sit here and make a decision today to decriminalize or legalize. We don't have that power.
Dr. Whibley, and then Andrea.
So, it struck me from all of the comments that we've heard, both in the newspaper and certainly on email, that there's a lot of confusion about what decriminalization means. For instance, I'm interested, Tommy, with you talking about this gentleman with the post-traumatic stress disorder. I mean, there's also medical use of marijuana, so that would seem to me differ from the decriminalization. Many people are confused decriminalization means legalization, that we've become Colorado. So, I really think it's incumbent on us, if we are going to push this, and I think Kenny has mentioned that we might push for a study to be done to clarify this, that we try to do some information or education to the citizens on what this actually means. And it doesn't mean that now everybody gets to walk down the street smoking weed. So, anyway, I mean, I don't know about you, but I've been struck by the diversity of the comments and the confusion.
Tom, would you respond to Terry?
Yes, just, but they did say at our session, and Kenny, you can verify this, that medicinal may have a better chance of making it through the General Assembly. There seems to be more Republican legislators now that are starting to sympathize with that, and there may be an opportunity through that route to start the conversation. And you have to legalize it in order, for medicinal purposes. So...
But do you have to legalize it totally?
No.
There are states that have legal medical use, but not...
Right. No, but you would have to, it would start the conversation.
Sure.
Andrea?
Based on earlier part of your presentation and the timing of making sure we send this information up to whatever our stance is in the legislative package, I think that's, you said December 1st was the, is that the deadline for that? I just want to, I mean, realistically, are we... Okay. So, the question I have, yes, to this, I've gotten 25, 30-plus emails. Everyone, everyone, not one was against decriminalization. Everyone was strongly in favor of decriminalization. And on the record, I support decriminalization. What can we do, though? And is there anything that we can do before this General Assembly session? That's my question.
In likelihood, a bill passing this General Assembly, the 2017 General Assembly session is slim to none. So, I think Councilman Riddick put the pathway forward, is that we build coalitions, try to draft a model. The council person in Wise and other parts of the state would have to simultaneously offer the legislation the same year, maybe the 2018 General Assembly session, and get it into the posture where we look at all of the things that Michelle addressed, the cost, the economic impact of criminalizing individuals for the small usage of marijuana. You may want to have, to look at the medical use right now. So, Schedule I substance is, you know, is not used for medical purposes. The distribution, where is it grown? Who regulates it? And taxation. Bernard made it very clear earlier that if there's any taxation to realize, the state's going to grab that. So, it's not ready for primetime, but we should continue the conversation. And as Mr. Riddick noted, it's an uphill battle as relates to the General Assembly structure. The goal is to come to terms with what we want to see, and then share it with VML and others, and maybe in the 2018 session, something will be ready to be introduced.
Just to follow up on that, because Michelle sent me some good links, and VML yesterday was great information. So, cities like Philadelphia and Orlando have passed individually legislation for decriminalization. But because we're in a Dillon rule state, the state of Virginia, as Martin was pointing out, I just want to make people understand, we don't have that authority to do so. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's a good question. What's the penalty for a locality passing something? What would happen? I'm just curious.
Can they kick us out of the state?
They cannot kick us out of the state.
It's easier to ask for permission and forgiveness.
No, I understand that.
Ask for forgiveness and permission.
So, does Martin Herring then file a lawsuit against the city of Norfolk for passing something in our, I mean, seriously, I'm just asking, because Terry's brought this up before with guns.
Well, we would subject our citizens to being jailed for distribution, for growing, for possession. We don't want to go down that road. We would put our citizens in direct conflict with state law.
That would be one of the options, is that the Attorney General could bring an action. There could be other actions in the court. What the General Assembly has done on other occasions is where, when a locality is not following the line, is to pass fiscal measures. For instance, if our retirement fund is not providing at least 66% of the benefit of the IRS, we lose certain taxes. And so, they're not without weapons, but there's not any answer off of the shelf. There's no existing provision to penalize us for the passage of an ineffective law.
That's what I was wondering.
Well, can we do the minimum, then, that you said today?
Well, can we, can we do the minimum then that you said today in the article about why couldn't our council at least ask? We have two delegates that are interested in sponsoring legislation. Heretic said he would do it again. And Don Hester also said that she would carry legislation dealing with this. But going back to your idea of having this set to be studied. I know General Assembly is a little bit more favorable towards studies as opposed to action on actual legislation. So would they support something like that?
Well, I think individual council member, individual members of the House and Senate will introduce again. I don't think that we should take any action. I think that we should continue to do what we're doing, gather information. And then when we build a coalition with a model legislation that we think meets the goals and objectives, then we will get behind it. But if Steve Heretic or Delegate Hester or Senator Eben will introduce legislation, certainly, I know members here will lend their, their voices and their support. But I think the posture that we find ourselves in, continue to do what we're doing. In this, in this particular session, 2017 session, because anything that we present now will not have been fully vetted. And we don't have the perfect or the model legislation that we think will get us to have a bill passed or even getting the bill into a study or getting to the Crime Commission. The person who chairs the Crime Commission right now is running for Attorney General, Rob Bell. And the co-chair is Mark Openstein. So the likelihood of getting it in this General Assembly session is very difficult because of the atmosphere in Richmond.
So you're saying even a study would not be approved?
A study is unlikely to be approved in this 2017 session. It's an election year.
But every two years is an election year for somebody.
Not for statewide. Not, not.
The House of Delegates?
Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General.
Yeah, okay. Do we have any information on whether any other Commonwealths have done this? Have we looked at the other?
Other Dillon states.
Yeah, the other Commonwealths around there.
There's four Commonwealths, but there's.
Only one other Dillon.
But this because they're Commonwealths doesn't mean they're Dillon. There's Dillon and then there's Commonwealths.
Okay.
But I don't know who the other, there's three other Dillens.
Well, I think.
Kentucky, it's a case state.
Well, I think maybe looking at who else is a Dillon and, and a Commonwealth might help. At least if they've gotten anything passed, to look at what the legislation looked like when it went to their legislative body.
Andrea is willing to admit that she's for it. Anybody else around the table?
I support it.
Oh, yes.
No, we all do.
There's 39 Dillon role states. Sorry, it's not, it's four Commonwealths, 39 Dillon role. And some of them have passed legislation.
So maybe looking at what they've done and how they've crafted it. I mean, to me, there's no reason to reinvent the rule. I mean, reinvent the rule, reinvent the wheel. I'd like to reinvent the rule. But reinvent the wheel here and, and look at what they've done and how they've worded things. And, and, you know, see what we can take from that that works for us and use it.
So that's part of our gathering of information, Angela, and our fact finding. And that's what we will, will continue to do. And I think, again, I agree with Mr. Riddick. I think Michelle and Kemper, I think you did a great job bringing the information in detail. And I think we should continue the conversation. Yes, Dr. Wibley?
Can I just ask, what are we doing actively to garner other support? What are we doing with our neighboring cities? Has anybody approached?
I think Tommy probably did. At the recitation yesterday, it was.
Did you directly talk to them regionally?
We did afterwards.
And they are in favor of it?
Well, they, they, one council member can't speak on behalf of the whole council. But I think they're willing to ask for conversations.
Is this a discussion for HR PDC as well?
Mr. Manager?
Well, I was, Dr. Wibley. So we started this in, the discussion in August. We brought it back up during the retreat. So I understand your question about the coalitions, who else we've talked with. Tonight is the first time that we have the overwhelming direction from the council that this is something you'd like for us to pursue heavily. So what we'll do is to take our resources and get as much information as we can to bring it back to you in terms of who else out there would be interested in this.
It's like a natural fit for first cities. Yeah, so I mean, that.
Terry, that would have probably have been a part of the discussion, but it was counseled at VML. So we have a phone conference that's going to take place in the next couple of weeks. So I'll bring it up.
Tommy, I just wanted to add, we had a little bit of success at the VML in getting our road maintenance, highway maintenance issue added to the policy, actually VML policy. So it's in the policy statement legislative, excuse me, legislative, which is better because that means it's a short term that we can attack. And then also just something that was interesting that was added this morning, which is a neat idea for getting more revenue. I think it was, was it Danville or Dimwitty? It was a D locality that.
Lottery?
The lottery, yes. Crew, okay, it was Crew. Those towns. No, well, they're by, I think it was Dimwitty or somebody that added on. Yeah, yes. To tax the lottery, to add a 5% tax onto the lottery. Virginia Lottery officials are opposed to it because they said that it would lower the pool of prize money. But the, those localities that have already looked into it have found that it would not. And it meant significant amounts of money for localities to go towards education. I think maybe it was Danville that said they would get $1.2 million back on that. And so if you can compare Norfolk to Danville on how much we could end up getting with that, that there is money that's basically sitting there in the prize pool. And it was just an interesting conversation, an idea with a General Assembly that has failed to find other revenue sources. But knowing that lottery, everybody's always been disappointed with how lottery proceeds have never come directly to schools the way that it was intended, that it's filtered through that, that this may be an interesting opportunity to raise some additional funds for education. And something that we should probably support if it ends up coming through.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, Mr. Manager, you want to go with the annual audit plan or?
That would be great, Mayor, since we have John that's here.
John Sandler.
Some of his staff members.
Good evening to everyone, afternoon rather, late afternoon. We're here to present to you, as we normally do annually, the annual plan for the City Attorney's Office's actual schedule of plan audits. And that's the emphasis we like to place on that, is just a plan that's subject to change. What I would like to do first, I would like to do an overview for you this evening. Then we'll go to the objective that we have pertaining to our audit. Then also we'll go through the development of the plan itself. And then we'll also go do the fiscal year details of the audit schedule as well as the timeline. So starting out, I would like to emphasize, starting the overview is that the audit function plays a key role as part of, critical role in the operation of the government as we work together with city management, administration and building a well-managed government. Audit function is part of the team at Norfolk in building a well-managed government. A lot of folks keep forgetting that we are part of the team, although a lot of folks don't like to see us come. But one of the things, one of the reasons why we're part of the team is because it's our role to evaluate, appraise, review, inspect, analyze and assess government services, programs and operations. And as a result of that, we provide feedback that could be, that we consider important feedback through recommendations and suggestions. As a group of independent professionals, what we do in enhancing the city's trust among the citizens and confidence is important because we add value to, to us as a team by the fact that confidence and trust comes through the audit function. Therefore, the audit function is of great importance. And then I'm telling you all things that you already know and making Norfolk a success and promoting accountability and transparency, transparency rather, as the council visions priority is implemented. So we wanted to give you that overview that we are part of the team. Also, the annual plan presented each year to you is an instrument that we use to officially document the work plan of the City Attorney's Office. And it's impacted importantly by our fraud, waste and abuse hotline, management requests of unforeseen needs. Prior to this year plan that we present to you today is a combination of assessments at the operational level, which we mean in terms of the vision and the bureau level, as well as at a program level where we're looking at specific initiatives, our programs of the city. We're presenting to you 13 audits, of which five are rollovers from the prior fiscal year and four anticipated to roll into our fiscal year 18. Each plan is built, each year we build in the plan a surplus number of audits in case we have, our workload is reduced or decreased as related investigation or other demand work may decrease. The plan objective, what we try to do in the plan is try to establish, as I stated early in the overview, a framework for the audits to be conducted. Also, the plan is used to guide activities of the Attorney's Office for the year. It outlines the areas of focus that we have for our audit schedule for the year and allows a flexibility. And what we mean by that, that the schedule is just a, a plan. So if something comes up that we have other priority demands, then we will move in that direction. You may ask the question, how do we develop the plan? And every year we do go through this, this matrix here. We develop the plan through audit leads. Those audit leads normally come from prior audits. Comes also from investigations, complaints, city financial audit. Then also internally, the audit staff, as well as the risk assessments we made, conclude that certain areas need to be reviewed. Externally, citizens, current events, trends of the locality, state and federal government, we watch to see what's going on at those levels to consider for our plan. A hotline that we have established, the hotline complaints from citizens as well as city employees also attribute to areas that are focused for the plan. Key to the plan also is management concerns. We try to coordinate with city administration as much as possible and city departments and city agencies to see if there are concerns, areas of concerns that they feel like we should look at. Then of course, there's you all, the governing body, the city council. If you establish priorities that you want us to look at, a specific request, and those will be considered really the priority for the plan. What I would like now to present is the actual audits, we said 13 audits that we are considering. We will present this to you by quarters. The first quarter, which makes, represents July, August, September, will include assessments of administrative hurdles for the, for the Norfolk inter-agency consortium. And I've mentioned to you, this whole quarter carries on from the previous fiscal year. There are various stages and we'll see that when we present to you the timeline in the, in the next slide. Also, evaluation of challenges and effectiveness of the management controls for citywide contract administration. Evaluation of the challenges and effectiveness of the management control for the maintenance process. Challenges of fitness for the management of the detention center and assessment of the controls for cemetery's operations. On this timeline, you'll see how those, those projects are spread and anticipated dates of completion. We have two that administrative hurdles for the Norfolk inter-agency consortium. That audit is basically completed and we are in the process of submitting, sharing the draft and having an asset conference with the department. Also, the contracts administration audit we should be completing at, at somewhere in the quarter we end now. October through December, we're right there preparing our draft report. The next three audits will be done by the end of December to include our draft reports. If we move to our second quarter, we come with a continuation of some of those audits from the previous, from the, from that first quarter, which ended this September. And we add on two new engagements. Assessments and challenges of fitness and administration of the city's homelessness, homeless and poverty initiatives. Evaluation and challenges of fitness and management controls for the operation of the Department of Development. And we will present a timeline, as you see here in this slide. You'll see the first, this slide here shows our rollover audits from the, from the previous quarter, the first quarter, which I indicated earlier, contracts administration, citywide maintenance process, detention center, cemetery operations. On this next slide for the second quarter, these are new audits that we bring into you, to you this evening. Challenges and fitness of the city homeless and poverty initiatives and the challenges of management controls related to the Department of Development. Our third quarter for January, February and March, we propose three additional audits and two careful audits, which would be assessment of the homeless and poverty initiatives, the Department of Development, and we will add three. The city, the fitness of the administration of the city's water production and water distribution processes. Also, the city's procurement, material management process and the city's energy and green initiatives. So that's our third quarter here. Spread it out in the timeline, you'll see for the third quarter, we have two rollover audits coming in from the second quarter. And that would be the audit related to the city homeless and poverty initiatives, our Department of Development. Then the new audits would be three new audits. And we see, starting in the January timeframe, we would, challenges related to our water production and water distribution processes. Also, our procurement process. And then mid part, point of this quarter, we will start with the ministry, of the audit of fitness administration of the city's energy and green initiative. Our last quarter, we will carry over four, four audits from our third quarter. And we are bringing four additional new audits on. Those four additional audits would be assessment of the administration of the city's streets and bridges maintenance program. Also, we will be looking at the grounds and urban forestry maintenance service. And we will look at the challenges and hurdles and options for the city's assessment process. And we have this timeline presented for you showing for the fourth quarter, starting to carry over these, the rollover audits from the third quarter, the three there. Then also we have our new audits, which is the four audits there. The maintenance, the street and bridges maintenance program, our C W G program and our urban forestry maintenance service, as well as our city assessment process. So that's our plan we present to you. In addition, we have a normal workload in the areas of where we do our investigations related to fraud, waste and abuse. Also, we administer the external contract for KPMG. We're also responsible for tracking missing, lost and stolen property of the city that's reported to us from the departments. One initiative that we were, we bringing back on our plate is the review of the city's debirthments and credit card transactions. Also, we're doing the F S training in any management, a council request that may come from, from you as a governing body and other agency requests. Last fiscal year, we did have a request to come in from Norfolk Public Schools, which we obliged. And you all was informed of that, that we had that request. And so we're not sure if any of those other city agencies would ask us to do anything, but so we leave it there as, as an option. So there we have it. Do we have any questions?
Mr. Cullen has a question. Yes, Mr. Smith.
You touched at the very end, you mentioned Norfolk Public Schools. They do not have their own audit staff, is that correct?
No, they have not had an internal audit staff since, I believe, 1999.
So we do financial audits, but do they do process audits similar to this, what you were talking about?
No, they don't have an internal audit function. Over the years, this body, back in the early 2000s, asked me to liaison with them to try to get a function established. That was not successful. So what I have done up until, up until private two superintendents back, normally would meet with the superintendent annually to try to encourage them to establish an audit function.
Recognizing that's one of our largest expenditures, it seems to me that there would be some opportunities for us to request some opportunities to work with the school board to identify areas for, for audit. And in the future, you mentioned the school board has requested help.
Yes, they had.
What was that, what, what area?
That was an area. That was an area, actuus, well, it was actua, what I consider more of an immaterial area of operation was with the vending machines. So, they'd ask us to come to, to a vending machine.
I can think of some, some larger areas that might need some audit, like transportation or something like that. But we would want to work with our partners of the school board, of course.
Mr. Smigle and Mrs. Johnson.
Okay, John, thank you. It's always good when your auditor is not in the newspaper, either attacking another auditor, or saying something about them, or incompetent auditor, so we appreciate all the work that you do. I'm going to ask you the same question I ask you every time you come for this. Now, keep in mind, we have a different mayor now, okay? Different, different council. Do you have the staff and the technology that is needed to be the most efficient auditing office in Hampton Roads? I'll just pick Hampton Roads. And you have a new council, so this is your op, this is your once-a-year opportunity to let us know if we need to help you with the budget comes. So, you got to let us know now.
Well, one of the weak areas for us really is our investigations. We have not, the hotline was implemented through the council actions, few of you all were here that told us to do it.
You're welcome.
We, when we established the hotline, we did not hire, what I tried to do, I made the auditors also investigate us. And so, that's really a critical area that's taken us away from some of the audit focuses that we need to do. Because what's happening is, and I have two of my main deputies here, and they can tell you, what we do when the, when complaints come in, and some of those complaints are not what we consider the most important things come in, we try to respond to those complaints, and they have to stop what they're doing to jump on these complaints. And sometimes, we chasing our tails with some of those complaints, and we, we really need investigators to fill up that side of the house. And so, I will say to the council, that's one thing that we definitely need to, 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 to consider.
Starting salary for, what would you say like a starting salary for an investigator would be?
If they had benefits to it as well.
I mean, we, we got all these college kids that don't have jobs, they're coming out and...
Well, I would be honest with you, what we would, what we would be looking for in that, in the area of investigations, is somebody with law enforcement background.
Okay, okay, you have retired police officers who, who like to, they get their retirement, and they can get a small salary, or part-time. I think they could.
All right, so, we have Mr. Riddick and Ms. Johnson, or?
And I would want to say, Mr. Mayor, if you allow, thank you, thank you as a body for supporting, and the managers work with us well on this in I T, and the new software that we acquired to move us from the paper to automation. So, we will be fully running that system in January. So, we appreciate your help on that. So, we do have that in our war chest, as you want to call it that, to brag about, and to also use to move from, from, to a more automated electronic environment.
Okay, Mr. Riddick or Ms. Johnson, who would want to go first?
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, I am glad to hear that, because that was something that we discussed as a body, in particular, the carryovers. I was very interested in how long it's taking us to carry over the assessments each quarter.
It's taken us, in my view, because I'm the head of the office, I'm not comfortable with how long it's taken us.
Absolutely, you share that.
And so, I'm saying that I'm not considering it as, and we have, there's justification because of all the other things that we need to do. But I feel like, my staff probably saying, I push and push and push and push, but we have a lot of things that come up.
Yes.
That keep us from doing what we need to do in a more timely fashion, to help, in some cases, departments probably say, oh, we haven't seen you in a year. And a lot of times, that's because, on the same project, because of the fact that we're moving in, in so many directions on some of these, some things which I consider as frivolous, but we must do. For accountability, transparency.
Can I finish, Mr. Mayor? The, the other question, well, this is a question. I would really like to know, you mentioned the outreach to Norfolk Public Schools, as far as us having the resource that could possibly help them. I really want to know, why didn't it work with Norfolk Public Schools?
It's a long story.
You didn't say it was two superintendents ago.
Yeah, that was two superintendents ago. And I talked to Dr. Boone about, one of the things that I, as the city autos encouraged, want to encourage them to get internal audit function, because it's a large school district, and I think there's some needs, needs, there are very many needs there for, for them to have an audit function. Back in the day, one of the options that was put on the table is for our office to actually do the audit function. They hired the staff, and I managed the staff, or we actually do the work. Or, another option that they proposed, did a counterproposal back at that time, was that they were, based on what they, as the board saw would be needed, we contracted, I and I would administer the contract for individual projects. So, there were some considerations that were put on the table, and then it was kind of like, even went to the point, can you be our part-time auditor? Of course, that couldn't work like this. So, it kind of like fell along the wayside. What I did in the meetings, because I normally meet with the superintendents of the, for the district annually, to just make sure that their services that are provided by external auditors are up to what they consider as acceptable. So, normally, that meeting setting is when I bring up about internal audit function.
And where will that happen?
With Dr. Boone, I have a project that, that I need to meet with her on, that I probably have that discussion with her when I meet.
Okay, thank you.
They do have audits.
Mr. Riddick?
I'm sorry.
My, my question was similar to Councilman Smigels in regards to staff, and the direction that I was going in was because of the complaints that you, you know, that our employees are going to come to you with, and I just want to make sure that you do have the staff for that, because our employees really need a sounding board, you know, for that type of thing.
Indeed, they're utilizing our office.
Yeah, so, so I guess, so I guess what, what Council Speaker is saying, what I'm saying too, is you prepare your budget, or even before you, you know, if you have to come to us now and say that you need staff, then we're prepared to give you staff now, because what they're doing is very important. It's just like every time I turn around, Mr. Fiscal is hiring an attorney, so.
Oh, boy. You know, it's, it's interesting that you...
You know, I have one lawyer since I came to City Norfolk in 1997.
What becomes key to that at our retreat, when we were discussing what to do with some of the extra money, and we talked about risk management, handling that, his office could become key in helping us reduce potential risk and lawsuits, which is why those investigators can get involved, particularly with employee complaints, and then lawsuits from employees on issues, it would be helpful in, in getting that. So, I, I know that we kind of already dedicated some of that money, we've already said where it's going to go, but we may want to revisit using that for investigation purposes, and also for efficiency reasons, investigations on efficiency, where accidents could happen, and things like that, so. It's not, I don't think it would be that much to hire part-time retired, even if we started with just part-time retired officers or something like that. Norfolk Public Schools hired a retired police officer to do their investigations, and, you know, maybe we could help with that sooner than later.
And I do want to make a comment, we are exploring, and the manager and I have been in discussions over the last several weeks, on trying to establish a compliance, ethics and compliance program. So, we have sent a person from our staff to a meeting, a conference actually, to get information on how to develop that, which we're moving to some of the areas, Councilman Smigle, that you mentioned, the risk assessment and areas. So, I'm excited about that, and to share that information with the manager, to see how we can move forward in that initiative.
Dr. Whibley.
Bernard, what percentage of our claims have been from employee complaints? Any lawsuits? Yeah, I mean, I wasn't, I'm interested by Tommy's comments, because I wasn't aware of any of them that have been generated by employees.
He sent us a legal brief, he sent in there.
I think that the majority of adverse complaints are in the personnel vein, allegations of illegal discrimination.
Maybe what I should ask is, what percentage of the claims we've paid have been to employee complaints?
It, it would be a small percent, I'm comfortable that it'd be well under 10 percent, well under 10 percent.
I mean, I think when we're justifying whether or not that's going to, I, I'm not saying I'm against having more employees, but whether or not we can justify the money toward, to defray our risk management claims, I'm not sure I can do that, when I think we've got some substantial worries in other areas. I, I'm very concerned about our risk management.
But the investigators wouldn't just look into, I'm not just talking about an employee complaining of a bully.
Yeah.
Department head, I'm talking about also efficiency, you know, for example, we, we got an email about that, the back of the trucks or whatever, you know, people can't stand on them anymore, or whatever, that, that's going on with that.
Oh, the trash trucks.
Trash trucks. There's, you know, and I'm seeing things like that on Facebook. So, as that stuff comes up, your auditing office does look at efficiency when you're, you're doing audits in departments, and you make recommendations on...
Yes, and when, and when those complaints come to our, directly to our hotline, we do pursue those, that's one of the things that, that I was mentioning, that we will take, since the audit staff to, to address those. And we, we're, what we are doing for the last, for the last two years, we have basically been issuing management letters to the department heads, basically when things like that come up, say, hey, this is what we found, you know, you need to try, these are not full-blown audits. So, they're more what we call management concerns, and we'll address them from that standpoint.
Insurance claims are also probably could prevent...
So, do we, do we ever have any benchmarks or evaluations of what actually has occurred as a result of an audit, of our audits? I'm not saying that you're not doing God's work, I, I don't mean that, but, but I also think it's important that we look to see if our efforts have benefited us, and, and to try to chronicle that. And is that possible, or have we ever done that?
Well, normally, when we complete, I would say on this side, when we complete a full audit, we normally send surveys back out, but not at the level what, what you are looking for, Dr. Whibley, in the sense of, we should be doing it in terms of savings, and a lot of times, we can't quantify the savings like, like we really would want to, because you normally want to say from a result, this audit is how much you saved.
Well, for instance, like with, with Mr. Smigle talking about safety concerns, like with vehicles, and then we, you come out and have a manager report, but it'd be interesting to know if that actually changes what occurs, you know?
Well, what we do in the process, we...
Mr. and Mrs., where did that come from?
Everybody's calling me Dr. Whibley, I'm feeling like I...
Tommy, Terry.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think, what we do as part of the audit process is through, is through the recommendations. So, when we give a recommendation to management, they respond, and they're supposed to respond and say, this is the action we're going to take, this is when we're going to do it. Then, it's the follow-up process that we are supposed to do as the auditors on the material things, to go back out and see, have you made the changes that you indicated you would make? Years ago, this body, what we used to do for this body, my predecessor and, and I for the first couple of years, we used to give you all this report, these are all the audits we did, here's all these 500 recommendations, and this is what management has done. We, we decide to go, really to go away from that, because a lot of, some of the recommendations are not significant for you to even want to know about. So, what we basically do is the things that, of significance, we do the follow-up, or we wait until we do another audit to basically do the follow-up at that time.
That's great, thank you.
Mrs. Graves.
Um, I, I support having investigators for the hotline issues, simply because of the reason that you stated, and that is, you know, taken away from the auditors who are actually doing work, because it's very difficult to get work done when you're constantly interrupted. And I think, when you guys do those manager letters, do you also send a copy of those to the manager's office as well? And what is the follow-up procedure? And do you have staff for that?
Of course, we don't have enough staff for most of any of these things, but we do what we need to do. Me and the manager meet twice a month, and what, what I do in that meeting is go over with him the investigations, and he, some of the stuff, he may say, well, John, do you have to go through this? Because some of it's not that important, probably with what he has on his plate. We go through it, and then that's how we basically, basically do that. If it's of a significant matter, or a matter that we consider that may have consequences for citywide, then yes, the manager would be, it would probably be addressed. In the past, we have addressed it to the city manager, versus to just the department head. But some of the things that we write in the manager letters from one incident or something, and we basically warn them, if you want to look at it that way, hey, here's this one problem, we don't see it as pervasive, but you may want to put, think about controls in this area. So, it's not anything that's really, what I would consider as widespread, where we basically would need to have the attention of, really in the case the deputy city manager or the manager. Now, what we, what we try to do, most of the deputy managers, deputy city managers, they like to know what's going on, so what I try to do is, as possible, meet with them, say, this is what's going on in your area.
All right, John, we're going to give you some help. Mr. Jones, you appeared everything that's been said.
Sure, yes.
So, now is your turn, Mr. Jones, that's how we're going to do this.
So, Mayor, members of council, John is exactly right in terms of the relationship. I think you recall that, I guess, my first paid job was working for the General Assembly, the Joint, J L O, the Joint Legislative Auditor Review Commission. So, I agree with John 100% on understanding the value of having an audit function. I think one of the most important pieces to this relationship is that the departments open up. When, when John comes in, it's not, let's all shut down, and let's try to find a way not, so it's a, it's a great relationship. And also, as John said, when we meet twice a month, the whole objective of that is to make sure that the recommendations are being implemented. And, you know, I would agree with John in terms of the hotline. The hotline provides this great resource to employees, and I believe, years ago, when John started the hotline, he did it without additional resources, and over time, you've gotten maybe bits and pieces, but...
We never had anything.
Right, so, so somewhere in there, he got this additional workload, load without additional resources, and, you know, I think what the council has been saying tonight is for John to be 100% successful, is to make sure that his resource is aligned with his workload, and we can work with John on that.
Okay. All right, Mr. Manager, I think that we're about to move into closed session.
So, we have one more item, Mayor, and I want to make sure it's time since this city could get that before you...
Mr. Johnson, before.
Okay, if we could just, if we have one more item tonight, time-sensitive, and I want to make sure we don't run out of time to discuss that in closed session, so if it's the will of the council, we'd like to bring that to your attention.
Yes, sir. We have a second item. Four?
Just one, just one.
I move the members of council assembling closed meeting on October 11, 2016, at 6:19 PM. The purpose set out in clause three of section 2.2-3711, in the Freedom of Information Act, and that is discussion of disposition of publicly owned real property in the tidewater drive for Gen Beach Boulevard areas of the city. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Flannan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.